For the blessings of it, just ask the Lord that you would allow us to make the right decisions for the children and employees of our school system, Lord, and we just ask your blessing all that we do in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please sign in.
Benny, present. Credmore, present. Fields, present. Williams, present. Heatherly, present. Lester, present. Morgan, present. Roger, present.
Okay. Recognize the guests. We have Mr. Adam Wright, Campbell County High School Band Director, that has some comments he'd like to bring forward. So, Adam? And I don't know if we've got a microphone. It's probably not working. So, if you can talk loud, you don't have to have a microphone. You good? Okay.
I know a lot of these things aren't necessarily specific for issues, but it's something that the collective mind can help come up with solutions to. Mostly, you got to be the second thing to hit the table of contents. Biggest thing for me is the need for some help. Since I've been there, the band has grown from forty-nine up to seventy-eight this year and next year. Right now, I have ninety-six signed up for high school band. That does not include the middle school. In the middle schools, I'm seeing over two-hundred-and-thirty-four kids a day. Two classes at the fall, two classes at Jackson, and then at the high school, I have seventy-eight this year. But that number could easily jump up to two-twenty each as of next year for myself. Just comparing what we do in the band world to other classes, you wouldn't put two-hundred-and-fifty math kids or kids in math and a little teacher. Similarly, in the band world, we have many different instruments, different needs, and different levels for these students. And we have just a lot of need for more individualized instruction that there's not an hour's mistake for me just by myself. Mr. Hendricks is currently being teacher's aide two days a week. His job mostly is to help with peckle work, grading, putting things in the computer, helping to organize trips and things like that. He has very good old time to get out and do any kind of instruction with the kids himself. I'm really, really in use of helping as assistant band director full-time. I'm hoping they would be a director that would have the identical schedule to me, working both middle schools all day and the high school all day, especially so we can start breaking the maximum number of students apart and get more individualized instruction for individualized sections, say maybe just a drum section, percussion section, take them aside, work with them, and then come back together, very similar to, say, a football team. We have multiple football coaches for that reason, and specific instruction, and specific jobs that they have doing the exact same thing in the band. I made a list of all the neighboring schools, which are pretty much around us, to have at least two band directors, if not more. I just heard that it did it on the list. At Clayburn, up in Clayburn County, they have two different high schools with two different directors at different high schools, and they're hiring teaching assistants, directors for them, or sorry, assistant band directors for them next year. And their bands are smaller than ours. Just show the importance that we definitely need a second director if there's any way we can. Next up, we have a major practice field project. Band has been moved around for the placement since the band's inception. We started on, I believe, what was the baseball field, then it was moved down to where ROTC was, and softball field area, then eventually down to the front lot where the band spent over twenty-five years. And when soccer came in, we were blindsided that soccer was more to be given a field there, which gave us no suitable place to practice. We've been forced up onto a field that is not honestly good for any kind of practice, even soccer doesn't want to practice there. And we've had kids break their leg this year trying to practice in a field entrance to the school to the left of the guard shed. So, we're going to ask you all to help us in leveling off a place, preferably closer to the main road, so our sound doesn't interfere with any classes, and hopefully the least amount of dirt and things to be moved. It doesn't have to be perfect like the soccer field, but we'd like to have a place that is our own. So, the first step is to get the place surveyed and see if it would be suitable. So, I sent Mr. Burge pictures of a estimate that we got, which is an amount of a thousand dollars total, to survey the land and step it off for our grading purposes. So, we get a practice field that's ours location. This past year, we were told we could use the soccer field since they started building the thing, and I was told go ahead and order the paint. Then I called into a meeting right before I called and ordered, and the soccer coaches were there and said absolutely no paint on the field whatsoever, and you can only use it two days during class. If there's ever rain, there's no one on that field for two weeks. We've got to practice five days a week, plus two days after school, sometimes on Saturdays. We practice a lot, an hour and a half, five days, plus an hour and a half after school, and then sometimes two or three hours on Saturdays before we go to competition. We can't keep moving around, and that's all we did last year. If we did get to go to the soccer field, we had to pack up everything, move across to the other side, and that took us thirty to forty minutes, which wasted a lot of our time. Plus, we were given a, this chat about us, a portable field that we had to take down and stake up, and that took thirty to forty minutes just to put the thing down, and somewhere around forty-five minutes to an hour to roll the thing back up. And if we're trying to move it, then we had a completely wasted practice. So, we really desperately need a place to practice. I've included with there a plan for the new director and all those things, and a lot of my responsibilities that come as a director. I've talked with Mr. Hendricks. He said that his stipend was raised at nineteen-seventy-five to two-thousand-five-hundred dollars and has not changed since. So, I would like to ask if there's a way for my stipend to increase to comparable to head football coaches as well, because I do see as many kids, if not more kids, who practically have as much time as they do, and I'm doing it completely by myself at this point. The financial cost of band and to the students is getting a little bit out of hand. Our cost to go to a ballgame is a minimum of three-hundred dollars per bus, which the size of our band required two buses this year, which is six-hundred dollars per away game, which is usually five-seven ballgames, plus three competitions. As you can see, that's a lot of money. Next year, we're looking at potentially having to have a third bus to be legal on that. So, that would be nine-hundred dollars plus per game according to the distance that we go. We're currently going through Marty Jackson services, and we tried to use the school bus a few times, but it ended up costing us more. The athletic bus costs us more than Marty Jackson did to go the distances that we traveled. The next problem with that one listed in here is that we have a new policy where parents can't ride the bus, and the buses can't be going, taking field trips while bus routes are in session. So, we would constantly show up late to ballgames because we had to wait on the routes to be over with, and we couldn't leave. As soon as school let out, well, we couldn't leave during school. So, we definitely need to find a way around that. Football can afford charter buses, we cannot. They did take charter buses to multiple games last year. We are currently charging students a suggested donation of two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars each. Part of that is to help us cover the cost of buses. So, I was talking to Mr. Naffer a few years ago about potentially taking a dollar from each ballgame's ticket and getting it to the band, since we are part of the entertainment for the night, and we work very hard for the halftime show and the pet band to support the football team while we're there. We were given a small concession stand. That is not helping much of our cause. We actually lost money in the long run from switching from the big concession stand to the small concession stand. We had two games that were the first two games, and they switched us to the last two games since I've been here, and then they decided just to give us the small concession stand. We've been using it every game since, but we're actually making less money in that than we were the two games in the large concession stand. So, we're struggling to get kids to these games. The kids are required to go to games, but they're happy to take the bus to get to the game, and that's really tough for them and us. We have a lot of counting of instruments that we have to maintain and replace and send in for repairs that the boosters and fundraising is trying to constantly upkeep on these instruments. We were hoping there might be a small way we could get it through the income coming in, thanks just for our maintenance of instruments, somewhere along the lines of five-hundred dollars each year just to maintain the instruments and send in for repairs and cleaning and things remaining. Lastly, is band staff. Two directors still only scratches the surface of a lot of things that we need to get done. We need more specified instruction and specific skills. Obviously, on the ball team, we want a professional quarterback teaching your quarterbacks. You want a professional lineman teaching your lineman. On our instruments, specific sections, that we need really, a lot of help in is our percussion section, which is really big this year. We're trying to hire back a gentleman by the name of Kurt Edwards. He's John Edwards' son, of course, your son. We marched in the proud and stoplight marching band, and we'd like to give him a fair supplement for coming in and all the time dedication he gives to us, which is two weeks at band camp, once a week for three hours of practice in every ballgame, every competition, and every parade, where he has a lot of duties, writing music, rehearsing music, and fixing lots of problems with our drill. And also, our flag corps needs a specific instructor, and we have a lady of mine who's already working with him a little bit. She is the current teacher in the school. She's quite open, and she's Donna Jones. We're hoping that we can get her a assignment to go about with the band, or if we can hire her.
Mr. Wright, I said all you had. I just want to say I greatly appreciate you coming tonight. Appreciate all your dedication as parents with what you do with the band. And, you know, I know we have, hearing that it's growing, I think is great. And, you know, I know we've got some former students, I think, in UTE's band right now. It speaks volumes for the program that you've got going. And I would like to ask Miss Field, this year, to look at some of these things, and we're beginning our new budget for next year, and I believe I'll speak for everyone, that we will take a close look into that budget and see if there's anything we can do. And some of these things, I believe, Miss Field would be glad to take care of, looking into some of the things about the practice field and some of those issues, the funding part. We will take a look at some of the budget and see where we're at. But I greatly appreciate you coming. Thanks again for everything you're doing.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask just one question?
You sure can.
When you're requesting, like, the band director, is that for an assistant or for a full-time band director?
Full-time.
Full-time, thank you.
Someone that would be with me all day long. We have a lot of brass players and percussion and woodwind players, and they're completely different animals. So, I can take the brass, because that's my specific instrument of choice. And then we've got woodwinds. I would love to get someone who's a percussionist by trade or woodwind by trade, and then we can split the classes in half, work on everything, do things more detailed, and then bring them back together to a better result.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before we approve the consent agenda, we have an addendum I believe everybody's got a copy of, which is three C, three, four, five, and six. Does everyone have that? So, we're going to add that to the consent agenda. And with that, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to have a second.
I'll make that second.
Got a second. Any discussion? Not, please cast your vote. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the results.
Fang, yes. Credmore, yes. Fields, yes. Williams, yes. Heatherly, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Josh, yes.
Okay. Before we approve the regular agenda, we need to move under seven C, reviewing of bids, number one, that needs to be moved to seven D two. Is that right? Yeah, is that what you mean? Let me make sure I'm looking at that right. Is it seven, or is it eight?
Yes, seven C one needs to be moved to seven D two.
Seven D two. So, I'm going to ask a question on that first. Do we need to move that to action, Adam? Is that where we're needing to move that? I thought we needed to move that over to an action.
That's included in the motion.
Oh, no, we're requesting to advertise bids. I'm sorry. My mistake. It is going to seven D two. That is correct. With that, can I have a good a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda with these moves.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not, please cast your vote. Anyone wish to, wait, we still got Steve. I'm trying. You're trying? Okay. Anyone wish to change their vote? Not, show us results.
Fang, yes. Credmore, yes. Fields, yes. Williams, yes. Heatherly, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Josh, yes.
Comments from the chair? I've got just one quick comment. I just wanted to comment on the safety summit. Some of us was fortunate enough to get to attend back in April, and it was very good. We were at this great conference on safety. I think we all realize safety is the number-one priority that we have for our kids in Campbell County, to make sure they're safe. So, I did bring, we got, the ones that went, we've got a book that we brought back, so if anybody wants to look at it, feel free to holler at any of us that went. There's a lot of new ideas out there that they talked about in safety. And with that, I'd like to appoint a safety committee, if everyone feels good with that. I think it would be a good idea to appoint a safety committee to start looking at, you know, anything in our schools. You know, one of the biggest things at that summit they talked about was SROs, and we are very fortunate to have an SRO in every school except one, and hopefully, we're going to be looking at the budget this year to be able to add one more, and then we'll have every school covered with an SRO officer. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Lisa Fields, would you graciously accept being the chairman of that, of the safety committee?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Does anybody else want to volunteer to be on that committee?
Sure, I would.
Steve, you would like to do it? Anyone else? Feel free. Brent?
Yes.
Okay. And like I said, when you set up any meetings, anybody's welcome to come. I think it'd be a good idea to start looking at all of our schools and see if there's anything out there that we can look at to improve the safety, and we'll just take a look in the budget over there.
Mr. Chair, there is also PowerPoint from that summit meeting online, so if anybody's interested in that, I can find it for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, directors might be report. Ms. Fields?
Okay, I would just like to say this is Teacher Appreciation Week. We have some administrators and teachers in the audience tonight. I want to say thank you to everyone of you for your hard work, your dedication, and all the time and effort you put into doing everything you possibly can for our students. And board members, we appreciate you as well because you share in that with us. So, thank you very much. I would also like to give you an update that we have been awarded the Gear Up Grant. We're third-time recipients for that. We have received one point two million dollars to be spent on getting our students ready for college, college and career readiness. It will begin with our eighth-grade cohort group beginning this upcoming school year. Very excited about that. That was a very competitive grant, and we are one of few school districts who are three-time recipients for that. Also, Ms. Tori Lawson sent out an email to our teachers a couple of weeks ago advertising our Aspiring Leader Academy, and that is offered to anyone in the school system who holds a certification in administration. That will begin in August. That will be our introductory meeting. Each meeting after that will be guest speakers, activities, several different things to empower our leaders to become stronger leaders. Doesn't assure that you will have a spot in administration upon completion of the program, but you will be well-prepared for that. It is also open to current administrators, principals, and assistant principals. So, please take that back to your schools. Spread the word. We encourage attendance for that. We're very excited about it. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to address the testing situation. It was not a success in any part of the state of Tennessee. Every school district experienced a lot of difficulties and problems, and because of that, we have the option to assume zero responsibility because of that. Or we could, if it's going to benefit the students, we could accept what results we may possibly get. We don't know what that's going to be. But considering we do not have a data person or anyone to do that, we're limited in our ability to do that in a timely manner. So, I have made the decision that we will not count those scores against anyone, teachers or students. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Recognize, I guess, Mr. Richard on our monthly financials. Would you care, would you like to go over those?
These are in your package. We have the highest status for the play-by-play one forty-one, one forty-one, and one forty-one bound, and they watch thirty-five, and that's just for twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Over a few pages, about half way down, the total revenue, eleven through March, in twenty-two years, one hundred and forty-two thousand, fifty-four dollars, and that's eighty-point-seven percent. On the next page, about third way down, total expenditures within the total of the school band, about twenty-nine thousand, and twenty-eight, four thousand four hundred and fifty-seven percent. That's parable to a flash. The second statement is on the country school dollar progress month, advocacy, cost of two hundred thousand, thirty-five dollars. Go over two pages, about third way down the page, over the, the dollar progress month, about sixty, three days, about twenty-two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars, sixty-one point seven percent. On down low, about half way down the page, total expenditures, three days, about twenty-two thousand, three hundred and one dollars, sixty-one point seven percent. And also, parable flash. First, the capture of one, advocacy, about ninety thousand, twenty dollars. Go over two pages, about third way down, total revenue, about, three days, about, eight-hundred and twelve dollars, sixty-four percent. Spent, that's two games, sixty-seven, sixty-three percent.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, to have a motion to approve the monthly financials.
I make a motion to approve the financials.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Not, please cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Not, show us the results.
Fang, yes. Credmore, yes. Fields, yes. Williams, yes. Heatherly, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Roger, yes. Josh, yes.
Okay, budget amendments and resolutions, we have a few. I just want to make a note that there was a revised resolution number five-three. It was mailed to everyone. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look at that. Just wanted to make a note of that. Richard, would you care to go over the budget amendments that we have?
Okay. Budget amendment is in one forty-one, total of the school band. exclusive award, musical funds for vital family resource center, around ten family and gain of Congress to help June. Also, a mass science project has received a refund, UT, and is going to be appropriated from Spine Two. The third role of receiving this contract is a super project, and is about to be incorporated in court. On the eighth, we get a double increase, revenue of three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, that's being offset by three thousand eight hundred and nine expenditures, by Spine Two, into the equivalent of nine thousand seven hundred and sixty. The third one, five dash two, also from the school band, this is the award, the state is being held control, is going to be, is a thousand dollars revenue, is a thousand dollars expenditures, for bouncing. Five dash three, that's back to five, that's, things is changing out. Okay, so, turn four thousand dollars allocated to the, to the hospital and sports, important to the nonprofit, the lab, the projects, Rob's, we need to provide this to the board, the new school, that's going to cost about six thousand dollars, whereas the needs system and our physical services, the beating, the structure, the, 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 the,
Please show us results.
Bane, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Fields, yes. Goins, yes. Peddly, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Ryder, yes. Motion passed.
Okay, can I get a motion to request permission to advertise bids for the gymnasium floor replacement at Jellicoe Elementary School?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second motion.
Have a second, any discussion? Not, please cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? No, show us the results.
Bane, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Fields, yes. Goins, yes. Peddly, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Ryder, yes. Motion passed.
Okay, request permission to accept renewal contracts, we have nothing at this time. Uh, date from Miss Faye Colmer, Faye, do you have anything?
[inaudible]. [inaudible].
Thank you, Faye. Items for action, uh, can I get a motion to approve NBI to perform the architectural construction administration service at a cost of seven thousand dollars for the gym floor replacement at Jellicoe Elementary School?
I still move.
Do you have a motion, do I have a second?
I see.
Do you have a second, any discussion? Not, please cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Please show us the results.
Bane, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Fields, yes. Goins, yes. Peddly, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Ryder, yes. Motion passed.
Okay, we have, uh, two policies we need to consider approving on first reading. I would like to ask Ms. Ryder, before we do that, would you care to?
[inaudible].
Yeah, explain the two policies.
Okay.
It was two, yeah, two.
Six point two oh three is just an update from TSBA that we've added some cross references on it and basically it's the same policy, but just an update that TSBA has asked us to approve about. And then interscholastic as well, if I do the right one?
Yeah, yeah, those two, we did those first.
Four point three oh one, interscholastic as well, and they were online, online, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four on there, talked about, uh, students not required to attend school athletics events or related, or related, event-related participation on school athletic team if there is an official holiday observed by their worship or religion or holiday. So it's an update of that policy too.
Okay.
Cross reference.
So that, can I get a motion to, uh, change policy six point two oh three and four point three oh one on the first reading?
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that motion.
Have a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, before you approve that, I actually was part of the group that debated this issue and some of the districts, I would say the majority of the districts are adding the term after on the first line, no person shall on the basis of sex, they're adding or disability being excluded. Under the IDA provisions, there's now requirement that if you have a physical disability and accommodation or modification in behavior, you're allowed, so my suggestion would be to add those two words to the policy.
Okay, I'll ask this question, can we make that addition and go ahead and take action? I'm assuming we can.
Yeah, this is first reading.
This is first reading, so.
And what were the two words?
It's the after on the first line where it says no person shall on the basis of sex or disability.
Or disability, or, okay, thank you.
I have a favor of that, thank you. Any further questions, discussion?
Then I amend my motion to include that correction, addition.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion? Not, please cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Not, show us the results.
Bane, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Fields, yes. Goins, yes. Peddly, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Ryder, yes. Motion passed.
Okay, Ms. Ryder, would you care to go over four point two one oh and one point nine oh one?
Okay, four point two one oh is credit recovery and this is also recommendation of TSBA. We didn't have this one, I don't think, I don't think we had it in our board policy, so it's a new one for us. A group we met, uh, a couple of weeks ago with Kamikke High School's principal, guidance counselor, plus a couple of the members of the, of this policy board, and discussed it, so I feel like this is a recommendation of theirs. And then, um, one point nine oh one, we did not have in our, in our, uh, policy menu, it's on charter school applications, so we'll have it in place if we ever receive a charter school application, which we have, I certainly have.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to, uh, approve on the first reading policies for, uh, the addition of policies four point two one oh and one point nine oh one?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second motion.
I have a second, do we have any discussion? Not, please cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Not, please show us the results.
Bane, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Fields, yes. Goins, yes. Peddly, yes. Lester, yes. Morgan, yes. Ryder, yes. Motion passed.
Okay, items for discussion, we have nothing at this time. Discuss legal matters daily, nothing at this time. Okay, recognize school board members, Mr. Morgan, do you have anything?
I did not.
Mr. Craig Moore?
I do, actually, I've been providing lunches for all of our schools, me, Steve Beth, and the lady, I must have gave her a really big order, because there's like two hundred cupcakes, so she spent extra, they're right outside, so if anybody wants to grab a cupcake, happy pictures.
Extra cupcakes, is that from the cupcake store down in Jackson Square?
You have to be me, too.
Okay. Ms. Faye, do you have anything?
I won't bore you with the details, but I had a wonderful trip to San Antonio, that's the reason I wasn't here last week, but, um, the first day I was there, it was seven hours as a delegate to, um, to the convention. There were a lot of controversy type things, it's the first time since I've been going that they had, uh, the little clicker count, it was tied, they did a number count, it was tied, they did, we held up our fans, yes and no, that was tied, then they came to each table and took an individual vote. And it was, um, if you want any details, I'd be glad to share that with you. And the other thing is the general assembly closed on the last of April and it was, it was in the wee hours of the morning that they closed, I talked to Dennis Powers the next morning and it went to way in the night, I think close to midnight, but those are online, there, there are a lot of those, um, issues, bills that were passed that affect us as local school boards and so if you want a list of those, if you'll contact me, I'll get you the list. And I missed being here last, last month, it was like part of me was missing for all that week, so I'm glad to be back tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, glad to have you back. Uh, it is Teachers Appreciation Week and I just wanted to say happy teacher appreciation to all teachers and to thank everyone in our whole county for everything they do, their dedication, their commitment to educating our children, so thank you.
I'll say the same thing, uh, our teachers need to be, uh, told what a great job they do and they really do, it's a hard job, it's a busy job, so we appreciate them very much.
Just thank you and Sharon pretty much said what I was wanting to say. Yeah, just thank you to all the teachers.
I did owe that and also I just want to say thank you to, to Nova Health Systems because they came out, I don't know, some of you knew, may, may or may not know this, they came out Saturday and held a clinic at the high school where they gave free physicals to our students. Anyone that wished to participate was eligible to come and get a free physical and those doctors and the nurses, nurse practitioners and some of the assistants had taken half of their Saturday to volunteer their time to do that, I don't, I think, uh, Nova did that for free. And we also had some of our teachers and coaches that actually donated their half a Saturday to come and kind of help, you know, with the students to make sure they went to different sections that they were to be assessed in. And it was really nice and I just want to extend our thanks to, to Nova Health for doing that because I know a lot of the children in our school system, it's hard for them to afford physicals so they are, can be able to play sports and I appreciate them for doing that and I appreciate the coaches and the teachers that took their time out of a Saturday to come and volunteer to, to help with those students as well, so that's all I have.
Wallace, you have anything?
I don't.
All right, would that have a motion adjourned? Wait, I'm sorry, don't do that yet, Richard, do you have something else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, uh, [inaudible]. [inaudible]. Is it all right to [inaudible]?
Sure, yeah, sure, that'd be great. Would that have a motion adjourned?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Adjourned, adjourned.
Another one, I think.
Well, I quit going.
You got signatures, Gail?
Thank you, Richard, I think.
Well, you know, I mean, you read the financials, and I talk them out on it, and you never do.
There were just some things I wanted to talk to you.
You better hurry, good thing it was a small crap, not.
I just wanted to talk to you.
Richard, you are the man.
Where's your partner found?
Jail. Hey, is Marie Cirillo still up there in the hall? She's still active? She must be a hundred. Really, I thought she was older than that. I thought she was older than that. Did you? I tell you what, she get a lot of things started up going, couldn't she? You're the one, okay, yeah. Uh, she was good for the community though, she did a lot of good things. I haven't seen her or heard her for a while.